Okay, we are recording.
We are recording, okay. This is a meeting of the Hampden Borough Selectment for August 31st, 2020. The meeting conducted remotely through Zoom as per Governor Baker's March 2020 order due to the COVID emergency. Please stand for the Fledgling.
The Fledgling is to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody out there in the Zoom world recording other than us? Can you hear us okay? You're hearing, hearing, hearing nothing?
Everybody's muted.
Okay, the first, the first item on the agenda is August 24th, 2020 minutes.
I'm going to send it copy.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I didn't get, I didn't get media. Well, shall I start?
Yeah.
Under Collins Center for Public Management, it says when their study first started, it's the second, the last sentence on the first page, employees had recent job descriptions were, who had recently were told that they could submit those to Collins. Is that accurate?
Yes, that my understanding, I told the staff and yes.
Well, they haven't, they haven't bounced any back and some have been submitted, so.
So that's.
In other words, rather than the employee basically copying it over for the new form, they're basically saying the columns.
Okay, top of the second page, first sentence is two, the do, the word do is really two. It's just a typo. And you got Collins will conduct interviews with employees too. And then in the next paragraph, fifth line down, the salary range is determined by how far an employee would drive to the job. Well, is that accurate or?
That is what she, she talked about, how far someone would drive to the job and that's kind of how they determine the salary.
I think she was saying that the market, the marketplace to hire in Hampden.
Right.
Is based upon of the length of time to travel and in other words, you do get outside the range at a certain point. I'm not sure where that is.
So I don't know how you rewrite that, but.
There's a correlation between distance traveled and salary.
And what those towns, what those towns pay, right? That's the difference. Not what their salary range would be here, but what the comparison group would be? Is that what we're talking about?
And you know, there's a regional market and in Western Mass, the regional market is a bit lower than Central, but not all of Central, but it's certainly lower than Eastern.
Okay, well, I wanted to be sure that that was clear.
Well, you just said the salary range is determined by the market.
What's that?
Salary is determined by the job market.
Yep. First sentence in the next section, Town Administrator Marco has begun to evaluate the department and its future to determine what the new building will look like. I don't think we're at the point of the new building, so determine and what it's future and in its future to evaluate the department in its future period. And when it goes down to it was agreed, which is maybe five up from the bottom. It was agreed again that the ventilation issues are the most critical. I'm not sure that was agreed. The, I thought it was that all the health and safety issues were of concern, all of those issues, but I didn't think we greatly, I don't remember, but we, if you guys say we did, we can say that, but there was, there were several. We know that from what he said, there were many ones. He has several ones, not just ventilation.
I don't have the thing in front of me, but it's like two period F something.
Yeah.
They prioritize the.
All these are ones.
Yeah, ones, right. That's the ventilation system is there.
But what, but how would we have?
These are all asterisk down there.
Above rough order man to cost our variable and then one is allowance to be used, two is description items in a whole or part firefighter health risk reduction. Three is estimated costs, no hard data is available. So, I mean, I just thought there were a lot of ones and I didn't know that we had looked through all those ones and said that this was the most critical. We can say critical, but most critical is. Under continuing review of dispatch consolidation, I questioned, we know the consolidation cost for Westcom, 40,000 to drive. I wanted to just be sure that these figures were accurate. I get different figures every time or I hear different figures every time. So it says 40,000 to join Westcom, 30,000 to expand fiber optic lines.
Yes.
But those are different than the Wilbraham figures, right?
Yes.
What they gave us is a Wilbraham meeting, which was 100 and then went to 179 or 189. Okay. And then aligned to East Long Menon Allen Street, 26,000.
Yes, that would be, that would be the note, 30,000 would be the cost of extending fiber along Allen Street to connect with East Long Menon. And the 26 would be the CAD merger and the merger of the telephone systems. That's what was proposed at Westcom. In Wilbraham, you have a letter there from the head of their dispatch operation. He said that he would not merge the CAD systems, at least not right away. And then you have a cost estimate there from Marcus for the, the merger of the radio systems.
Okay, I just, there's just things that I even understand.
We'll go to that. I gave you an update.
Yeah, that's okay.
I spent most of the week trying to dig up as much information there.
Thanks to me.
I've got the update. I'll explain those.
So with those, has everybody else got anything else?
On the, at the first part, I did think, we did talk about summarizing minutes and I think it was really a suggestion on my part and other, rather than noting that they should be suggesting that they could be in the future, basically. You know, I wasn't making a dictation that in the future, please summarize, but suggesting that with you and Bob reviewing the meetings, trying to summarize that's beginning.
Was change, should, should the could?
Well, basically suggesting the minutes could be summarized in the future.
Review again. And it was suggest they could be summarized.
And something I think you and Bob can work on trying to consolidate.
Perhaps we can try that for the next meeting, you know, to see how we can get it down so it doesn't take forever. This is smaller than it was before. The last one was four or five pages, I thought.
I think the four point font is really helping. Yeah. And that's it for me. Make a motion to approve subject for corrections.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we have another set here.
You have two. We have the August 3rd and then we have the executive session.
Now, are these been previously approved?
No.
Yes.
The 24.
The 3rd have been approved, but Mary Ellen had.
So, okay, so we need a different motion on that.
I didn't.
Can you not find them?
No. I looked into one. Here's one. Nothing under one.
So the proposed corrections are in red? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Do you find the other sets of minutes, Mary Ellen?
No, I know, but that's okay. I don't, I don't need them because if I already gave them to you, then you've already got them. I, I don't, I didn't know if any of them were so major that we wanted to revisit it or not, but I, I don't think they were, it seems to me. The amount, the amounts of the, of the range of the, of the fire department is not as different. Okay, it can, they can say since they've been accepted, they, I said, you know, in sense of family, but say like they were or change them. I don't care. Whatever the, they don't seem to be that. This one, this, this sentence. The way it was didn't.
So she said that the people might there believe their counsel of interest since the fire department wants to offer the town's ambulance service.
And it was something different before that.
Well, you should see, you should see what's in there because it shows it.
So there's not really much of a difference here. I mean, you made your point that, you know, you, you're worried that the people perceived the conflict of interest and the part after that was thematic, I guess. It's, you know, I mean, the key part is the statements. I don't really want to get in the habit of, you know. I do like what you're doing.
We can't hear you.
Nobody's hearing anything from you before.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
You have a good ear from this mic or from that mic? I wonder if because you had to press that to start.
Yeah.
I wonder if this one hadn't been working period.
Shut this one off. I want to shut the one off.
You all went there.
For some reason.
Okay.
It's taking over this.
Hopefully this has solved it. Tell us if it didn't though, okay?
All right, all right. Can you, go ahead, Mary Ellen speak. No, 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 I want to see.
Can you hear me now? Dad, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Uh, this is Donald. Could you hear me? That, anybody?
Yes, yes, we're getting you.
Okay.
And I'm the young guy on the left. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we heard you, John.
Good guess that.
All right, thank you. So alls we did was approve the minutes and made some minor changes in them. The school committee, we had a school committee listed here. They're not going to be here this evening. Some problem with scheduling, so we'll reschedule that sometime in the future.
I am here if you, I'm here if anyone needs me. I'm not a school committee member anymore, but I did get the email to be on. I don't know.
If I could just make a statement, my original purpose in extending invitation was just the opportunity for the board to meet with the new chair and I think we'll try and make that happen in the future. And if we have more agenda items, we'll share them with them till they have a heads off.
But thank you for joining us, Heather.
So this is, so we're.
Yeah, I wouldn't be much help anyways, but thanks.
Run the quarantine policy. All right, next item on the agenda is the quarantine policy for employees taking out of state vacation. This is based on the governor's declaration that anyone who's been on vacation to certain states, except I think there's only six or eight of them that are allowed, need to quarantine for 14 days or be tested and within three days of reentering the state. So we've, based on that, we've put together a policy for the employees as they return from vacation or, you know, so that's what that's about.
Can I assume that Bobby will probably just cover this at the next stop?
I will. It'll be next Wednesday. We'll go through it with the.
We need a, so we need to vote this policy or just remind him that this is the governor's policy?
Yeah, it is the governor's policy. I don't know. It doesn't make a difference if you voted or not. It's just the policy.
He won't care.
Let's look through the continuing saga of Westbrook two closing.
This just keeps going on and on and on, but it's over as far as we know at this point. And you have four places to sign, four documents to sign, two of which need to be notarized. I talked to Eva. She's here to do the notarizing.
All right.
I have printed all that I have. There are a couple of other things I just went printed. I'll see if you don't have those, Bob.
We have, well, the closing statement you have, that's just a look over. I have reviewed this with the council and we're agreed. So that's just for your information. Then you have three other documents to sign and I'll get the.
And so this one's signed by here. See this, you're going to sign as the buyer. I don't see it. One and two.
This is good.
And then this, these two, right?
There's, there's an original to sign.
John.
There's an original to sign on that. Compare them with that list that I gave you. Okay.
And then.
The limited power of attorney. Sorry, I don't know.
Well.
That's not for.
So we're the buyers.
Yeah.
Buyer, buyer. Okay, so I'm going to sign this. This is the original. But they've already.
Closing statement is for review only. The grant agreement needs to be signed.
All right, that's this here.
Assignment agreement.
And this needs to be notarized by Eva.
Eva here, he's going to go get you.
So typically with something like this, we sign and hold until that all obligations to the town have been satisfied before they turn it back over to them.
Can you just briefly, while we're waiting for her, go over for the audience what the Westbrook two closing is?
I think it predates me, but.
I think it does, probably.
No, I believe it's a CBA purchase through the, CPA participated with the land trust to pick up a partial land that butts current conservation land. This is, I believe, on the west side of Mountain Road, abutting the park as well and extending up a bit.
Okay, and this has been going on for some time because.
Well, they picked up Westbrook one prior to that, you know, right? And this now gives them a, a channel out to Mount Road. Watch like a hawk.
Can they still hear us?
I'm not sure.
Is that light on?
Yeah. Can you still hear us?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we can hear you.
There's a.
Ted's iPad seven doesn't look like it.
There's this one here. That's, am I signing the, the second page of the agreement twice? Three times? Three times, right?
Is that the one that asks each of you to sign a separate page?
No.
I noticed that they have those as well. On one of them, it's all three, sign a page and on others, it asks you to sign pages individually.
Really? There's three, it's three signature lines on here.
I guess I'll sign this.
Nothing up and signing on different lines on each one.
It'll be another six months of.
When it says buyer, you're a little hesitant.
When it says Mount Over.
You get more hesitant.
Now, I've got a one-page thing here attached to the closing statement. Is that just?
You don't want to do anything to the closing statement. I think that, that may have been, you know, between copying one type to two sides, I think that's kind of.
There's two, two documents to be notarized.
There is one.
Right, three copies, three copies.
That's what I have right here. It's on the last signature.
The only issue I have with this is really a blank check. It looks like.
That's why I'm asking, is this, is this page here saying that we receive this?
According to this, closing statement is for review only. It will be executed by the attorney and I think that's just an information. I don't, I think that one here has a document.
Okay, well, what's, so what's the other document?
I don't know, but since there's only one signature line, I'll take a, I'll make a vote motion to authorize the chair that if this needed, no, if this is needed to be signed, we authorize the chair to sign it as needed. You don't have to do it now.
Okay.
Maybe it needs to be done.
I, I second that motion.
I'll sign it. All in favor? Donald, all right.
It's really, you know, I like the three-line thing. It makes sense, but this doesn't.
It just makes any sense.
Hopefully you heard that Doug was reaching out to the group about taking care of the legal bill.
Yeah.
And that they agreed, that was their understanding.
So I guess that goes to.
I had that discussion and it's all set.
There's nothing else to sign with that until next week.
Right.
Okay, what is this extension agreement?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
That's because there was so much delay in getting the conservation restriction agreed upon, they had to extend the purchase and sale agreement. So it just extends it until a couple more weeks.
Okay, so it says on here, it says the sellers, then it has the buyer is the Minnetog Land Trust. So we don't need to sign this?
I, I think you have to agree, you have to sign the agreement, I think. Because you're the buyer.
You think that that's what that is?
I think you got it covered. Look, if it comes out next week, I wouldn't feel right to not having an agenda with Westbrook two on it anyhow. Be right below town meeting. As a weekly, weekly agenda item. Longer, seriously. We got Minnetog Mountain in less time than this.
Fewer lawyers.
Second that.
This is the one that you will have to find, you find a home. I think that, I think that's.
That, that's. That's, that, that's part of that, right? Okay. All right, good. Moving on, Undaunted. At least we didn't have to go to the town meeting and explain it again.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Yes.
There are more emails on this item than anything else.
On Westbrook?
Yes.
Are you ready to continue? All right, next item on the agenda is the tie-in bond sidewalk design review.
After our walking tour, there was this discussion as to the best location for sidewalks. And so they went back and provided several other options for the board.
So this, are these? So, okay, this one is on the, oh, I see. Okay.
One's on the, well.
It's really all about where you want to cross. But if you look at the one, however, that has the sidewalk along the west side pretty much the whole way, what's missing from the design and kind of critical is that when you get down to the senior center, you have to cross Allen Street. And that's not, you know, when you get down to actually.
Middle lane here.
Right.
So you get down here, you got to cross.
Cross, right. So it looks like there's less crossings with that one, but actually you're crossing the busy street right.
Right.
In the middle of traffic. I did speak to Lisa at the Housing Authority and we are going to work on a little survey for their membership basically and see really where is it you want to go. Her gut feeling was, I think it echoes the board, they want to go to the market. Everything else after that is a bit of a bonus. They do like going out for walking, the Cedar Row, Meadowbrook area, things like that. She really didn't know if there was going to be that much desire to walk down to the seniors center, but they do want to get across to, to Gary's, those two more, Tony's, if you will, for the old. And really, I think what the board's talked about with signage, with some type of protection for people crossing is the critical part right there. You know, it's all well and good to have a flashing light, but that doesn't necessarily stop some of this Connecticut traffic that zooms up to the gas station.
Has, has any stuff been given to going to, to Tony's and then going down to the mini market, the mini mall?
Looked at that.
So that they could access a couple of eating places, Dunkin' Donuts if they wanted to, the cleaners, whatever.
Well, the thing is, if you do that, you're really, you have a crossing, but then you stay with the west track going across, unfortunately, the entrance to the gas station as a thing. You really have no, and this is what they talked about in the meeting. On that side, there is no median. Technically, the town owns some part there, but it's like going in front of the bagel mark. You have a three-foot strip to put the sidewalk in before you get into the actual parking lot area. The other side, I mentioned that I had chatted with the, the previous owners of the nursing home. At that point, they were kind of interested in allowing the town to circle around behind Gary's, come through their property there and cross Main Street away from the intersection, basically down, well, you know, in the same area as here. The advantage of that is that you really, there is no good way to cross really at Main Street Summers intersection there. It's really, so if you did that and then came back out by Reddicker Bank area, or came back out with the bank, you're really a little safer crossing area right there. And then if you see the crossing plan, or is it your Bob? I think it's the, and we talked about here, this one here, obviously not necessarily crossing right there, but actually taking it down further to Reddicker's driveway, if you will, cross there and then come up. I think crossing where they show right there is just asking for trouble.
And the most dangerous crossing would be right at the senior center because traffic is coming at miles an hour faster and without a light, I, I don't see how. without a light, I, I, I don't see how it would work well.
Uh, the downside of this plan is that there is a bit of a wetland issue by Claude's, or Claude's area, across from.
Right next to where the preschool.
Just after preschool, exactly. Uh, after that, it's pretty wide open, going up in front of police stations and so on. It goes back to Mary Ellen's concern, though, you're on the opposite side from the mini mall, you know. Thrown out there, do you make a sidewalk system going down Meadowbrook and Cedar Oak? And come back that way? Again, you're doing a taking, because you're coming in, and people got it, technically town land, but it's still people's yards. Go back to the other thing, what are we doing this for? And I really think, are we serving the public, we're serving a segment of the community? Let's finish up with the, the Housing Authority and really survey, if you will, the customers, where do you want to get to? And then I think Bob has the opportunity to look at the cost associated with it. I mean, crossing at Gary's, I think we've all agreed, that's a critical thing, safety is just as critical right there.
Right, right. But that's the safest place of all the ones we've got, really. I mean, it's not, it's not ideal, because people do go a little too fast.
And right now, as you said, a lot of those people are crossing there now.
Yeah, that's what they cross right now, exactly, exactly. Well, it seems like curtailing it is, is probably in the, in the best interest.
All this, all the grant did was pay for the. Right, they didn't give us any money for the actual construction.
This is going to be a big expense, if the town decides at some point to do the construction.
So we have to sort of figure out, we're in the priority list of all the big expenses that we have, does this fall, and how many people will it affect, and all that kind of stuff, we're just a survey of some sort, we certainly, to get us.
I'll finish up with Lisa at the Housing Authority and get back.
And I think John is right, let's see what.
What'd they say?
What the traffic is.
Right.
And you'd have to be ADA compliant, which is a lot wider than the old sidewalk used to be, so you're talking.
It's a five-foot minimum now on the sidewalks.
More concrete, or even more black top, if you're going to do black top.
I think if you look at the Main Street sidewalks right now, they're probably in the two and a half, the three range.
Well, as I recall, when this first came up, there was not a ground swell of, oh my gosh, we're going to have sidewalks. It was sort of just a casual, you know. Yeah.
A lot of people have asked, can we finish the Main Street sidewalk?
Right.
And I think part of the biggest problem there is probably the slope between the BFW and Billy's House. You know, because there's really not a lot of land between that and dropping down into the river.
Right, right.
Well, and it's dropping into the river.
That's all we need is rolling into the river.
So you're providing a boat service instead.
Okay.
Got some comments.
Oh, yeah. Enjoy the wetland, enjoy the wetland.
That's true, too, no, the people at the walking club and that's true, I mean, safety along Allen Street is critical, it's all about, you know.
Yeah, the number of options, okay. So briefly, they have one option, which would extend down from Spring Meadow Lane, along by the gas station, across Meadowbrook, and then down to the mini mall.
Right, and crossing, crossing the middle of the.
Car crossing East Long Meadow, uh, this is it here, right?
You know, we did, we did talk during the walk that we would suggest they push those crossings back fifty feet or so.
Yeah, but it'd be crossing East Long Meadow Road, and then to the mini mall.
Right, the two downsides noted with that were the fact that there's not a lot of land on the west side, Bagel Mark, gas station, and so we're a sidewalk structure in. It was okay once you got past them.
Do you have to have a sidewalk on both sides?
No.
So you could just have a sidewalk one side, and they walk out that one side.
And then, and then you're crossing, crossing Mountain View, pretty much the whole opening area would be now sidewalk, maybe there have to be pads in place.
The other.
And then the crossing, right, of course, at the senior center would be the issue there.
The other option would be crossing from the, from the Housing Authority to Gary, to, uh, the Village Mart, going down towards the senior center, crossing Main Street, you know, at that intersection there, and then all along by the, uh, the church, the St. Mary's, the bank, and then again crossing Wolverham Road, and then to the senior center, which would probably cross that wetland, and then there, in the senior center. The other option. Confuses even me, the other option would be.
No, no, this is the one that's back across.
Let's have a, oh, yeah, okay, so then the other option would be, oh, that would, okay, so, so that would be that, then this option would be crossing at the senior center, uh, going down past the Village Mart, crossing at Main Street, and then going back across.
Down to the flagpole.
Down to the flagpole, going down to the flagpole, and then crossing again towards the mini mall, and crossing across, again, across East Long Meadow Road.
And then crossing back to the senior.
And then crossing back to the senior center.
Do we miss any roads crossing, I'm not sure if that plan missed anything.
If we don't hit them by then.
You managed to survive that.
You managed to survive that.
And then the other option that was brought up, which isn't sidewalks at all, but was to put up some kind of a light there, that just when the people come, stops the traffic, that just goes from senior center to across to the Village Mart.
Yeah, we covered those, they have the solar ones, they have the flag.
Yeah, are those very expensive?
Not terribly, no.
Yeah, so that might be, you know, a way to at least get them, at least get them as far as they need to go to eat, to get food.
Well, to get food, I mean, that's the thing, probably, there'd be an ability to get a grant for some type of flashing system like that.
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Because that's a thing.
Put a new ADA committee.
Right, right, so.
But there's a comment there that said it would allow us to have walking club group to meet at the seniors and run down Allen, right? It's not just for peaceful housing, okay? That's the senior center, right? All right, we've got these options to look at, and we don't have money to do it, but we'll see what we come up with, right? Okay, senior center CDBG contract.
You recall, uh, several months ago, where the town was invited to join with Palmer in applying for a community development block grant, uh, to be used for, uh, food, and also, uh, for some micro grants, uh, for small businesses. They're not ready to roll out micro grants yet, but, uh, this is the contract, and they're ready to start with, uh, basically the food, uh, operation. It's a standard CDBG contract. Towns of this size are not formula grant communities, but they are allowed to apply for community development block grant monies every third year. Been a while since the town has received one.
And we need to.
And you approve the grant, applying for the grant.
Right.
Right.
Here it is.
How much we get? So this, so this grant will be, uh, for the Hampden Council and Aging, will provide grab bags for seniors. Only seniors from Hampden will be beneficiary of the funds. The Hampden Council agent will provide monthly reports detailing the services provided, bags will be distributed to at least fifty seniors, funds will be used for essential paper items only, such as toilet paper, paper towels, facial tissues, and items of that like, right?
We're already doing a grab bag.
And they're doing it, oh, and the, uh, just the grant period will not exceed two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars.
Uh, can we get, I'm not sure who's online, can we get a, basically a comment from the senior center, or the COA board?
Sure, this is Becky. Um, the money will actually be used for the, um, current participants in the brown bag program, so the brown bag food comes from the Food Bank of Western Mass, and we have the ability with this grant to provide, um, as the chair mentioned, uh, necessary paper items, so we're providing, uh, toilet paper, facial tissue, and paper towels.
All right.
So you're. Or.
I'm sorry?
You're hoping the board signs it?
You're not opposed.
I'm always willing to accept money to provide programming.
When we do the, the agenda, and we do, um, titles of things, could we print those out, like CBDG? Or is it CDG, CDBG? Because someone reading it from outside, and myself many times, doesn't know what we're talking about.
Here, I'll make a motion to authorize the signature, I see Bob Markle as the signatory on this.
All in favor, aye.
Congratulations, Bob.
You now have to distribute it.
Uh, appointment of the ambulance oversight committee. We have.
We're going to appoint three, uh, we have four at latest count. But, uh, again, I thought that the board was going to delay for another period of time, because, uh, we're not going to receive a report until the end of September.
Don't we receive them at the end of every month?
No, it's quarterly.
Oh, it's quarterly.
So it'd be July, August, and September, so we, we'd get the report sometime, I guess, in early October. And at that point, we would want the ambulance oversight committee to meet.
I have mid-September in my head that we wanted to have people appointed by then. And it only went in online, on the website, and then in the paper last week, so I don't know.
So, we haven't had much time.
So there'll be nothing for them to do until they get the first report.
So, so who are the four people so far? Sharon Warner, Sharon, Robin Warner, Robin Warner.
That, I believe. He was late, a late, pardon?
Donahue. Okay. And we're going to postpone this?
Well, if you want to choose three, you can tonight, but I mean, we, we haven't had much time, uh, to advertise and solicit, and, uh, I always think it's a good idea to allow the public some, some, as much time as possible, so, board, you know, is not accused of just, you know, only.
Pointing people to these prestigious positions.
Well, the only, the only concern I have is that the length of time that it's taken to appoint, we've, how long we've been discussing it? And, and it's, it's always better to do things in a timely fashion. But I do see the, the idea that it hasn't been advertised a lot, and so you, you may not have, you know, huge quantity.
So is the consensus, we'll wait another week?
At least, like, I think the summary that actually the board wouldn't have done anything, the committee wouldn't have met, or really accomplished anything, it would have nothing to review, so we haven't really lost any time.
No. All right. So we're going to postpone that for now.
Do you print out for the proposal or?
No, I don't. I'll base it.
Get a couple guys together and let's go out for bigger.
Was this just chairman, this proposal here?
Yeah.
No, no, so my proposal, one of the item, one of the items on the, the fire station review was, as we know, the ventilation system, and the fire department has talked about this for a period of time. And my thought was that, to address that on a short-term basis, that we could have the three full-time firefighters stationed here at the, at the town hall, and that training, indoor training, or those types of things can be conducted in the auditorium, or in the Melville Room. And they would still be close enough to the station, should they get a call between eight and four in their work. Uh, in the interim, the fire department has applied to FEMA for a sixty-four thousand dollar grant for ventilation, to do the ventilation, so we can either, we'll either receive that grant, they'll know that in pretty short order, I believe, and, uh, or we could proceed with the recommendation of the architect, that we spend sixty thousand dollars to, to fix that. So my thought was to mitigate any, uh, any hazardous conditions that they might get, because, and if you read the, if you read with the, how the fire department described it, you know, they have the soot from the diesel, you have the gasoline fumes that are in the trucks and in and out of there, uh, and they could be stationed here, because they could just run up the hill, or, uh, and their training could be done indoors here at the auditorium, or at the, even at Thornton Burgess or that, to, to mitigate, I, I've sent it over to the, the, uh, fire chief for him to look at it. Uh, I haven't gotten a formal response from him, although I did run into the big Y, and he said, I got your, I got your thing.
They probably discussed the officer meeting.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's what my proposal, that, to kind of mitigate that, and, uh, quite frankly, to, uh, limit the liability of the town.
Yeah, I like the thought, I think the, that would definitely be more true in the winter. The doors are open, it would have been, not there, I'd like to see where the grant is going from that point in this weekend. Rather than shift everybody down here, the grant shows up, the work is done by the end of September, we shift everybody back.
Yeah.
I'd like, what's going to answer back from the chief to you?
So.
Push on the grant.
What do you think?
If we don't get something going by the end of September, then I think you're into your moving thing, okay? Now we're into a situation where it's going to accumulate, because the doors are closed.
Yeah.
Right now, I walk by all the time.
Yeah, the doors are open now, and the trucks are outside, most of the time they bring them outside and things like.
And what is the length of the, the renovation take, is it lengthy to, to do this?
Actually, I think you're putting in a venting system.
Yeah, I don't think.
Couple positive blowers up on the top.
So it doesn't seem like it's a big.
Yeah.
I think you'd see what you'd see, actually, in a restaurant, you know, with those, the round spinning things, you know.
Well, you see them in, in gas stations, where they just put the holes out the door.
You could do that, you can do that as well, or the repair places where they.
Repair places, yes, exactly, exactly.
But I thought, you know, for the safety of the firefighters and that, and also to limit liability to town that we have.
But the, the attaching ones are more if they're running inside, and they typically don't run them inside, it's the.
They start them up.
In and out, and that's where you want the deposit, you know, pulling the fumes out.
And do they have any timeline for when we're hearing from FEMA, or are they just?
Well, we'll have to track that down, and I, but I, I think most of those grant proposals, there's a date that they say that they'll award it by, so I'll just check with the chief.
I thought they took all the FEMA money for the, uh, the wall or something.
The wall. The second thing I have on there is the, is the, I'd like to proceed with getting the ambulance, uh, at least certified and registered.
You talked about that last week, you said we're so close that why not finish that?
Right, and, uh, it requires a letter from the board saying that they approve of it. And at least that would account, give us, I mean, we got this asset, and I think we should have this asset at least in line to do something at some point.
Right.
So I would look for a motion from the board to do that.
You do the last.
We didn't, we didn't do it, we didn't.
I'll make a motion to proceed.
Did, um, did, um, did it not pass certification? I thought it was in that process.
No, no, they, they held everything up.
They were asked.
I asked them to hold it until we got the whole action ambulance thing squared away, so I'll make that motion.
And, and do we think we have the whole action thing straightened away?
Yeah.
All right, so, um, and is this, is there going to be a cost to this?
Two hundred dollars. Two hundred, two hundred dollars for the, uh, thing, and I think there might be an additional couple hundred bucks for the, like, when you get your inspection sticker and that kind of stuff, you know.
Yeah, okay, second, so, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm going to write, the chairman has to write a letter saying that we approve of the upgrade of, of the, you know, the approval of it.
Whatever it is.
I think there's one in there from when they got the fly car, when we did. So, we have a motion seconded, held, favored.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And now the next thing Bob has abandoned us.
You want to be acting a moment?
Lucky.
You abandoned us at a critical moment.
Got a call from Joe.
Well. We are, we're on the continuing examination of the regional dispatch alternatives.
Okay, you had asked that, uh, I put together a list of, uh, costs for three options. Option number one would be to retain, uh, the dispatch operation in Hampden, uh, and to see if, uh, there are savings that we could realize. And number two, to, to look at the cost for consolidation of dispatch in Wilbraham, and number three, uh, consolidation of dispatch with, uh, Westcom. Uh, we spent a good deal of time trying to dig out the entire cost of the operation. The numbers we were using last year were fiscal twenty, and fiscal twenty-one, as you can see, the cost of Hampden dispatch is four hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. That accounts for two and a half percent raises, that accounts for the retirement assessment. By the way, the retirement assessment for the town is just eye-popping. Thirty-one percent of base salary. Retirement board in the county is making up for lost ground, and it's very expensive for Hamden and presumably the other towns in the system. There's a cost for workman's comp, a cost for employer Medicare, a cost for OPEB, a cost for overtime, $49,000. Contractual shift overtime, training not covered by E911. Contractual sick bonus days, uniform allowance. And the dispatch software yearly fee and the yearly dispatch console lease. So it's $447,792. I did meet with the chair or the head of the dispatch union to discuss potential savings. The suggestion which he made was the town could consider cutting the administrative assistant, that's a 20-hour administrative assistant, and cutting one of the five dispatchers. The approximate savings for doing that would be in the range of $60,000.
I don't think that administrative assistance though is billed against dispatch. It's part of the general police budget.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so there wouldn't be a savings on dispatch.
No, no, and I talked to the chief about this. He's, he would resist that because he said the functions don't go away if this individual performs. And also, if you cut a fifth dispatcher, that's going to mean more overtime costs and he doesn't see significant cost savings from the reduction in force. So that's approximately where we are.
Right.
With retaining the dispatch locally, going to cost in the range of $400,000 even with the cuts. Consolidation with Wilbraham, I think a very significant and important meeting. Yes, sorry.
Riddle me this. If there's. Oh, I'm in it. Okay, maybe I did my math wrong. Hold off on that riddle. Continue.
Okay.
One sixty-eight.
We did have a conference with officials in Wilbraham on the 26th. Bottom line from that, the chair of the Wilbraham board said Wilbraham sees itself as a vendor. That the town of Hamden would be purchasing a service. And I think the two selectmen here would confirm that he said, make us an offer. I found some difficulty with that because I think to make an offer, we would have to have some understanding of the cost incurred by the town of Wilbraham to provide the service. I mean, I could pick out a number blindly, but unless I know, unless we know what the approximate cost of providing that service would be to the town of Wilbraham. I'm not sure that I'm able to make an offer to guess what that cost would be, so.
Well, I think what I got from that was that, for instance, we're getting a bill from Westcom.
Yes.
If we jump in with them, I think it's $100,000.
Yes.
So their point is, well, if you're allowing Westcom to charge you, why couldn't we charge you as well? Right. Now, with both proposals, there would be no cost to the town because you would have the grant that would pay. So even though they might say, oh, you're saving money, you should pay us $50,000. That $50,000 would still be no cost to Hamden.
That's right.
Just like the Westcom, $100,000 would be no cost to Hamden.
Yeah, the deal, to mention that again, that is being offered by the state 9/11 department is that for three years, they would pay the cost or the fee to provide the service to the town of Hamden from another entity that we would consolidate with. So if we were to consolidate with Westcom, they've said about $100,000, the state will pay that fee for three years. If we were to consolidate with Wilbraham, whatever that would be, let's say 100, that the state would continue to pay that for three years.
And they said, what was the other thing? They said it had to be reasonable. Well, remember the conversation was, well, you just can't throw some number out.
That's right.
It would have to be something that would stand up to scrutiny.
And the state emphasized that apparently with the Wilbraham town administrator, they've also said the same thing to me. I talked with the state office today, Mr. Pozniak. And they make it very clear that you just can't throw everything into the pot there and expect for us to pay. It has to be sensibly related to the cost of providing the service. Okay. So let's assume 100 then, if we wanna make a comparison with what it would cost at Westcom. In addition to that, Wilbraham would not charge a fee. An entry fee. Westcom does require an entry fee of $40,000. We have a new estimate from the Wilbraham IT department as to the cost of extending fiber from Hamden into the center of Wilbraham. You recall that we've been mentioning $100,000 in the last couple of weeks. A more accurate figure according to the IT department in Wilbraham is $179,296. $179,296. And lastly, the cost to connect the radio systems, $6,881. Yeah, it's also worth noting that the quality of service there, and that's important, I think, would be significantly improved because both Wilbraham and Westcom can do genuine emergency medical dispatch, which means that the care begins as soon as the phone call connects. And that's an important step forward in providing service to those who are facing significant medical trauma. The dispatch consolidation with Westcom. The fiber line would have to be extended, not to Wilbraham, but to East Long Meadow. It would be extended along Allen Street. And the cost for that would be $30,000. There is a fee to join Westcom of $40,000. And consolidation of the radio systems is estimated at $10,000. It's $6,800 in Wilbraham. It might be the same amount, but the, we only have an estimate from Westcom. And $10,000 would be, I think, a good ballpark figure. Also, you'd have the improved quality of service in that Westcom employs a number of dispatchers on duty at all times, and so they could provide genuine or full or emergency medical dispatch. Now, there are a couple of common costs that would apply towards consolidation at Wilbraham or at Westcom. The cost for unemployment insurance, not known. I think all we can say is that there would be some costs, although I've had one discussion with the director at Westcom where I was told that the market for dispatchers is reasonably good. And that, well, they would not guarantee that they would hire the Hamden dispatchers, and neither would Wilbraham. But that there are jobs available in the region and it would be reasonable to expect that the unemployment insurance costs would not go on for the full length of time. But that's an unknown cost. Also, the chief of police has given us an estimate. If we wanted to station a civilian at the Hamden Police Department, the cost would be $80,652. That would provide for a civilian at the PD from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night, Monday through Saturday. And 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday. Don had asked the chief to do a survey of the number of people who come to the PD and ask for some kind of service directly. We did one week's survey, I believe.
And you're doing three more.
Yeah, doing three more. I think most people, when they want emergency service, call 9/11 now. But nevertheless, there might be some justification for having a civilian at the police department so it doesn't stay dark. Also, the cost of merging the IMC public safety software, estimated at $16,073 at Westcom. If you look at the letter that came from Mr. Gentile in Wilbraham, he said that they would not do that at this time. They would not merge the IMC CAT software at this time. Presumably, it would be merged at some point. So that cost would be postponed, I would think, but not altogether displaced.
I do see in Tony's letter, he says the possibility that state 9/11 would cover the cable, the fiber?
Yes. I talked with Frank Pozniak today about that. And I asked him that question directly, will the state cover? He said that they will let, I mean, he very careful language. He said it was likely that they could cover $30,000. He said covering $171, his words were, it would be much tougher. But he didn't say no. He just said it'd be much tougher, so.
The worst case, they could kick something in, and?
Worst case, yeah, they would certainly provide some kind of subsidy. Whether we could get it all or not. I don't know. So those are the three options and the costs associated with it.
Well.
The one.
Oh, yeah, I got 11 people. I figured it out. Actually, I have it a little bit higher. I got $2,000 bucks higher. We're talking about the. We're talking about the cost of Wilbraham's dispatch. It's, according to their director, it's $497,851 without benefits.
Yeah.
So.
Possibly loaded.
So that's, they have 11 dispatchers. Their payroll is about $473,000, and they've got $25,000 in expenses. So that doesn't account, that doesn't account their benefits. And so if their benefits run the same as us, you can add another 30% to that. So it's another $150,000.
Retirement and also health.
So. But I think the thing with the I wasn't in on the Wilbraham meeting, but I think they're saying, make us an offer. This is what I look at. Last year, we had 609 911 calls. That's less than two a day. So are you telling me that your 11 dispatchers can't handle two extra phone calls a day for $100,000?
Or less, you know, there was never a number thrown out there.
Or less.
Yeah.
I did send you the numbers that were sent to me by the chief in Wilbraham.
Yeah, they've had 2,000 something so far. So, which makes sense. They're three times our population. We do 609. They're running about, they're running about 20 something. So they're about, you know, they're a little bit 2,000. So they're about three times our size, or three times the goal. But what we're talking about here is taking two calls a day.
I think we're a little over fixated on the make me an offer type.
Yeah.
If we got down to it, and I think Bob has done a great job of recapping the numbers, Westcon versus Wilbraham versus doing nothing. Or looking at savings, the four options.
But what I'm talking about, if they wanna make, if they're talking about making a profit, because they're a vendor, well. You don't have to hire, you have, yeah.
No, Westcon, they're making a profit.
Right. They're making a profit, making a vendor. Well, you're making, taking, taking two phone calls. So if we offer you $50,000 or $100,000 or go with the Westcom thing, you're still way ahead of the game because you really don't have to hire anyone.
Sure. Well, I mean, you make that point. The Westcon, you're taking two phone calls for $100,000. You're doing pretty well.
Also, the other factor, which I didn't put in the report that you're aware of, and that is Wilbraham currently gets $52,000 from the Commonwealth. That will go to well above $200,000. So there's gonna be about $150,000 in addition that Wilbraham would receive from a deal like this.
Why is it gonna go to?
Well, they would get our PSAT money.
There would be an incentive from the state from regionalizing.
Oh, it's for them to regionalize. That's one-time payment or?
That was not explored.
But I do think there's an opportunity to, like you said, Don, look at the numbers. Where are we with the numbers? And I think what I heard from Bob Russell and the other two selectmen weren't there, Carolyn and Bob Bullard. But they have a responsibility to their constituents, much like we do. Is this deal good for us? Is the deal good for them? I think on the face of it, it could be worked out. I think, in my opinion, over the years, we've had a good relationship with the town of Wilbraham in shared services. Lauren McCool, I think, is a fantastic example of that. So I'd like to go forth with, if we're going to talk about a dispatch committee, we should do that right now. We should put a date, drop dead on it, though. We've got so many numbers in front of us, we don't need to be kicking this around for another six months.
No. It's gotta be done, it's gotta be done by town meeting time.
It's numbers. It's numbers. You feel right with this number? Do you not feel right with this number? You're giving? Are you okay with the dispatch being serviced from, help me out here, five miles away?
Five miles away.
Basically, or one mile away, depending on where you live.
Yeah, 10, well, I'd say 10 miles and one mile.
It could be. You're at the, and the Rock and Dundee, this police station in Wilbraham is just as far to you as the one in Indiana. Jeff has always made the point that the police in Hamden is a mobile police station. It is where you need it to be. And probably 99% of all calls are responded to by the officers on the road. The quality of the dispatch is imperative. We have great dispatch in town. I think if that's the direction the board wants to go, we would be better served with dispatch with Wilbraham as opposed to Westcom. We could make the decision, I might not make any change and stay within town one. But if we were to choose, I think we'd get better bang for the buck out of Wilbraham. And to make the numbers right, that's the work of perhaps a committee and our board.
One other factor that I haven't mentioned, and that is governance. We didn't get to that in our conversation with Wilbraham. In other words, would it be strictly a vendor and a customer relationship, or would town of Hamden have some voice in the governance or the operation of the dispatch system? We didn't get to that.
No, I mean, we were told that with the Westcom, we would have a seat, one of five at the tables. Well, one of five.
Yeah.
I don't see it as a matter of finances primarily. I think I see it as a matter of trust. And I think Mr. Russell, several times at meetings that I have been to, has used the vendor customer analogy, okay, to say what that relationship is, what the relationship would be. He did, at the meeting, he did say that, he did make no commitment for after the five-year period was up, of what would happen down the road. And he did say that at one point, I don't know if it was he that said it, I have to look back at my notes, but that the the Wilbraham, Hamden would both be part of this, but Wilbraham would be the decision-maker and we would have input. Now, that seems a little to me, giving up a lot of authority from what we presently have, which is 100% control over what dispatch does or doesn't do. I think that the governance issue is important, you know? I mean, you wanna have a say in what's happening. I think the, one of the problems I've had is that the figures change every time I go to a meeting. I mean, it's amazing to me that these figures change all the time. I have a trust issue with the state. Okay, and I have a trust issue with Wilbraham, and I have a trust issue with all these figures. And I just think that I know that the people that do Zoom are very interested in having a committee. On the other side of the coin, dispatch has been studied since, you know?
2014.
2014, that's what I was going to say, since 2014 and even before then. So that is six, eight years of studying this issue. And it seems to me that we ought to be able to make a decision with all of the intellect that we have after six or eight years. I mean, that just seems, you know, like something that we should be able to do. So, but I do go back to it's a matter of trust for me, because I think you have to trust the people you're going into business with. So, but I do go back to it, the manner of trust for me, because I think you have to trust the people you're going into business with and feel that they are going to, and I don't think that we know, we know what the future holds for sure. I know we don't know what the future holds, but I think that this may be may turn out not as we wish, I guess is what I think.
Well, I think if it's an issue of trust, for instance, with the state, I mean, we're all concerned about where the state's going to be financially in the next couple of years, no question.
Exactly.
However, that would affect both either Wilbraham or Westcon, both things, because their, Westcon especially is so dependent on the grants being allowed from the money to them. I would take a little issue with trusting Wilbraham, and I know that there have been maybe concerns about relationships with the school district. But I think that's separate from the town of Wilbraham. I think the town of Handen has always enjoyed a good cooperative relationship with the town of Wilbraham. And I would encourage, and I know we've had, or there was a brief exchange about this. We did video the meeting, the Zoom meeting, I think it would be important for people to watch the discussion. We had a lot of input from the chiefs in Wilbraham, especially Tony Gentile, who's done a lot of research. I think he shared information with you as well, Bob. And I think it'd be important for people to see some of those numbers and how it was presented.
Can you just interrupt for one minute?
Sure.
There's a question here, it says, how can a decision be made if numbers are not, Lynn, and Wilbraham hasn't added a commitment? Okay. This is an ongoing discussion. The numbers are going to change until we get a finalize. The commitment's going to change. It's about making a decision how you get there. Just because a number's thrown out doesn't mean we're going to make a decision tonight or tomorrow. You make decisions by getting all the information, you know? And I constantly hear this, you guys don't know what you're doing, you're not getting the right information, you're only hearing from one person. Well, that's baloney, okay? We've got a number of things going on. We're looking at a survey about what happened with the dark station. Talking to other towns, we're getting numbers, we're getting high, hard numbers. You know, I've asked the State nine-one-one to give us the exact numbers of what Wilbraham was doing. We've got, we got their budget proposal, we've broken out our thing. We know, you'll find out what the unemployment costs are going to compensate. We know what unemployment is in Massachusetts. You get fifty percent of your pay for a number of thirty-nine weeks. So if anyone can get thirty-nine weeks of unemployment, we can put the numbers in. So you plug the numbers in if you ever get one thing. It's very, it's very disconcerting to me that people want to have discussion and transparency. And when you try to get the numbers to get the transparency, they tell you, well, you got too many numbers. You know, how can you make a decision without the numbers? That's what we're trying to do, the numbers, that's what we're doing. You know, and the selectmen are elected to make decisions and to work on these decisions, and that's what you're doing. Bob works on it a lot, I work on it a lot, Mary Ellen and John go to meetings all the time about it to get everything into one place. So every time I hear someone say, you don't know what you're talking about. No, I don't know what I'm talking about, no, but I'm trying to find out, you know, and I'm not listening to one person. I have a person who sends me a letter who says that he called nine-one-one from his cell phone and he got disconnected. And then I find out that was ten years ago. All right? Well, you know, now we have next gen. Any text call you make in Wilbraham or Hamden is received by the dispatcher that's closest. Same thing with your cell phone. If your cell phone has your location on it, they'll find you. So, you know, a complaint about ten years ago is not, is not useful to me, okay? I have people tell me, this policeman said this, this policeman said that. I said to them, have them call me. Well, they don't want to do that because they might get in trouble. Well, that's useless information. So we're trying to get the numbers, we're trying to get everything into place. When we have it all out, we'll have a nice chart with everything on it, and everyone can see it, and then we'll make a decision. But we're not there yet because we're looking for the numbers, we're looking for the input, we're looking for the best thing. We have a copy of the agreement that Shirley and Air have signed together, it's two towns. We have copies of other towns' agreements to see how they went. So, you know, that's where we are.
I would compliment the board on looking at this as thoroughly as they have over the years. I mean, and I, and I have a concern when we have people that say, well, you haven't done enough, or, I mean, when will it ever be enough? When, you know, if you talk to ten people, you shouldn't talk to fifteen. If you've got, you know, three contracts to look at, you should have gotten five. It seems to me that you should have confidence that the people that are sitting here have spent long hours, and John for many years, I'm sure, at least dispatched out the kazoo, talking about this issue and getting information about this issue. And whether we have differences of opinion, which is fine, but I think it's inappropriate for people that aren't part of all those discussions to offer suggestions that don't move us forward, only criticize what we have done. And I take offense at it. I mean, I don't think it's right.
One thing that was talked about is the date, what has to be done and by when? Well, the worst thing we have to worry about is that the state incentives are going to disappear. That's the, hate to say it, that's the bad target. Our budget is set until the thirtieth of next year. I personally appreciate the input from other people, you know, Jim posting quite a bit. Jim's got a lot of experience in town government. His points are well taken. He's been in this seat, he's received flack, so it's nice to be on the other side, Jim, I'm sure you appreciate that. But Mary Ellen's right, we're sitting here, it's our decision. We get input in. If the board so chooses to assemble a small team to help us get the numbers, the decision is still going to rest within these three seats here. Whether we get the numbers from Wilbraham, from Bob, from the state, whatever, they come here, as you said, Don, we have to look at analytically and then in light of our town feelings as well, and make that call. And that call is strictly us.
And I always say, there's nothing that precludes Jim from getting some research and submitting to us a report that he have, of considerations. Consider these things that I have, have looked into. There's nothing that precludes him from doing that. He can do it tonight on the internet or wherever. I mean, I just think that it's, it's got to be a team effort, and whether we all agree in the end or don't all agree in the end, really isn't the point. The point is.
Can I jump in here a second?
No, just not for, not right now. I didn't mean to sound that way. Let me just finish, finish my thought, because at my age, they go, they go out very quickly. My point is simply this, that because we're looking at a lot of different numbers and a lot of different things, doesn't mean we don't know what we're talking about or we don't, aren't doing the job, or we're not considering everything. We're taking it in a step-by-step fashion as it comes. For instance, as the question has arrived about a dark police station. So I thought to myself, okay, that's a legitimate concern. I'd like to know how many people come into the police station every day of the week, and what are they looking for? What is of interest? I've asked the chief to give me a breakdown, which he sent just a little while ago, of every phone call that's come in there in the last year. When they come in and the time they've come in. You know, are the peak hours, midnight to three in the morning, people calling with issues? Or are they eight to noon? So these are just some of the factors that we're looking at. And what bothers me is when people say, you're not looking at it, you don't know what you're doing, you're not looking at it. Well, fine. Yes, James, how may I help you? I'm you, Jim.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to, you know, a couple of things here. There's, my understanding is the Wilbraham dispatch supports their police officers on the road much differently, or I would say more similar to the way Hamden dispatchers currently do, and much differently than Westcom will do. And I've never seen that quantified. And Mary Ellen, I heard you say earlier that I can go and get the information. Well, I'm not, I'm not authorized to go and speak to the, you know, on the record with, with the dispatchers or the chief or other town officials and get this information. I only get bits and pieces that I hear from people or, yeah.
So you would, you would be interested, you would be interested in learning, like, what a typical call is like? You know, you know, I mean, the policemen's out on a, he gets dispatched, he goes to my house. What kind of information would the dispatcher be?
No, there was a, if you.
No, I believe, I believe there, I believe there's a lot of, if I can, I believe there's a lot of interaction between the dispatchers and the police that's not related to an emergency call.
Right, Jim, you might recall back when we looked at this with East La Meadow, that was the big discussion, that East La Meadow did their dispatching much differently than Hamden did. Remember, we were talking about the number, the call volume seemed so disparate, looking at the population?
That's correct, because the chief of police said the call volume in Hamden was about the same amount of call volume that East La Meadow had. And we said, at a population ratio, that doesn't make sense. And then we were told that the Hamden dispatchers interact very, I don't want to say aggressively, but, you know, helpfully with, with a, yeah, proactively with the police. And that is not going to be provided from Westcom. And it's my understanding that something similar to that would be provided from Wilbraham to say. So to say that Wilbraham's only absorbing two calls a day is a bit of a miscalculation. And those are the kind of things that I think haven't been looked at.
There's the intangibles, I hate to say it, it's tough to quantify, but it's a quality, if you will.
But you can quantify it in terms of what, what those things are, identify them. A checklist, this is what you get in Hamden, this is what you'll get in Wilbraham, and this is what you'll get in Westcom. And then you got, you know, you got a column of, okay, now I can see the differences. Those are the things, you know, the numbers, I, and I do want to, you know, thank you guys for working hard on this. I, it's, I wouldn't want to be in the situation, you're going to have to make some tough decisions. But I would like to see input on these kinds of things, and I'm willing to do it, but I need authority to, to go and ask the questions.
Great, thanks, Jim.
May I add something to what Jim said there?
Yep.
When you're talking about this eighty thousand dollars that they put in there, to me, that's exactly what Jim is referring to. The dispatchers in Wilbraham do that sort of stuff. So if we're going to give it to Wilbraham or contract it from Wilbraham, that work should go with it. That's part of what the dispatchers do. Obviously, Westcom said upfront, they weren't going to do that. So, so, you know, that eighty thousand dollars would have to be spent. But I don't see, if we're going to do it with Wilbraham, to Jim's point, why isn't they doing eighty thousand dollars?
I thought the eighty thousand was to staff the window, basically, for the two shifts. But if go back to, and this goes back to working with the chief, is there somebody else like this administrative assistant that could be up at the, doing that job, but at the window at the same time? So you look at, well, okay, the salary cost for those hours is this. But is there already somebody in a position that could be in that location offsetting?
And can you assess your staff differently, so that you could, you'd be using it differently? You might have a police officer that could do dispatch for four hours or whatever.
What was it, eighty percent of the things were licensed to carry applications?
Yeah.
Which a lot of times.
Turning paperwork, picking it up.
Are appointed, they should be appointed.
All right, well, we've got a lot more work to do on this.
Go back to the board, I think Bob did take a video. I really would think that video could be online, like our meetings. It was a concern that we didn't state it was being recorded. That's a courtesy, not a requirement. That when a meeting, you state that the meeting's being recorded, if you don't state it, you can't release it. That's only as a courtesy to the people watching.
Well, and under the emergency orders of the governor of the open meeting law, they say, they suggest that towns, if they can't provide some other access for their people to post their Zoom meetings as soon as possible.
Right, and it was a legally open meeting.
So it was a posted, so it's just posted.
It was a legal meeting, however, if you don't, if you record someone without their knowledge, which is what we did, which was what was done, even though the meeting was legal, nobody knew they were being recorded.
How did they know they're not being recorded? They're on Zoom, it's automatically recorded.
I don't know that it was recorded or not recorded by this, do I? Do they see, do they, do they all have these screens and see all the chat and all that stuff?
They see it was on, right?
And it says record in my corner when the thing is recorded.
Right. It doesn't automatically record, but most meetings are recorded, so. In other words, before the meeting starts, I always say, are you ready?
Right, 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 right. So, well, I, you're releasing it, I'm not releasing it, so it doesn't affect me, but but I know there's the finesse, ten thousand dollars in five years in prison, and I wouldn't want to do it, but you do what you're comfortable with.
Well, I don't understand, it's a posted meeting of government officials. If they don't understand that they're being recorded.
Well, we had the same problem with a meeting with the advisory committee from the region, when we were, when I was with the region. And it was, it was not, was being recorded by a person, okay? Was a posted meeting, and they said, the attorney general said you couldn't do that, and it was not right.
I think, I think, go back to Don's point here, with the governor's thing and understanding that it's virtual meetings, I think it's understood. I think also you look at the participants in the meeting.
Well, just send them an email, ask them if they care if it's recorded, if it's posted.
Well, the other, the other card is, I.
You don't care.
I don't care.
Bob doesn't care.
John's in most of the talking, so he's the one that should, we should have any agreements if he does.
Well, Bob Russell won't care. Tony don't care.
Tony and we had both chiefs.
I don't care, because I didn't say a word. But, you know, I don't know, you, you do what you want.
Well, I think it's important, people, we had a, I think, pretty good discussion, the points, that you make some of the points, that, well, this was said during the hour, people should know that.
I think, though, that the meeting was not, was very disjointed, I thought. Okay, I mean, it was hither and yon with the discussions, and I, I don't, I didn't find it. It's like the discussions that we have about finance sometimes, you know what I mean? You're, you're all over the world, this person's talking about this, and then somebody else comes off on another topic, and I don't know. But if you want to post, you post it.
Why don't you check with the participants and with Rose? But I think we should post it, then they can, they can get a.
Because if not, we're going to have to do minutes. It was legally posted minute of our board, we're going to have to do minutes, if we don't post a video recording.
I would, I would suggest that rather than posting with the people that are there, you check with the, rather than check, you check with the attorney general's office or the ethics commission and say, can I post a meeting if I didn't, that's who, that's who guy, who.
Attorney general does.
Attorney, it's attorney general's office, but, so I would suggest just with them and say, can I release a recording that was made without notification of the people that were there, even though the meeting was posted? I mean, say it, it's like, just exactly as it was, but.
Okay, any other input or further discussion on this? Thank you. Anything else to, the town administrator's report?
We got the schedule, what do you want, pick for a date?
Oh, day, yeah, for the water, for the, sorry.
Donald, before we, before we leave this, can I just ask, is, are you going, the board of selectmen, do you want to have a committee working with you? Or are you, are you not taking that suggestion?
I think there's some advantage to having.
I think there's been at least a couple of us that have written in and volunteered to.
There's definitely, if you're, Don, you've identified, we need this, 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 this. And if we had three or four people to delegate and get back to us, that's not a bad thing. To put this to bed, we need this answer, this answer, this answer, this answer. Bob gets a lot of it because he talks to the state. But I think maybe there could be an advantage to having two or three people, we're not dragging this on for three or four years, okay? I'm telling you right now.
We're not dragging it on for three months, or two months.
All right, you got it on, this is being recorded.
Well, I would think it's, it's, it's more advantageous to have a task and give the task to a person. So if you think that Jim would, has an interest in the topics that he brought up tonight, say, okay, could you research those for us and get back to us?
Then let's do this, you're the town administrator, Bob, we've got at least two or three people interested. I would suggest they meet with the town administrator, he gives them a task to get done, he can simulate his report and bring it back to us.
Okay.
Oh, that's, it's an unpaid job, I will tell you that.
Yeah, as usual, yeah.
High priority, low budget.
So touch base with Bob and take it from there, that way he can do those things without having to drag it back up.
Bob, Bob, you have my email, I think you have the email, the other people just suggesting, I'm assuming it's going to be a Zoom meeting or something like that, just let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the water, so the water in the scheduled date for water, the main water discussion, I don't know, do you want to do this at a regular meeting or have a special meeting? I just need to, I just can't wrap my head around it.
I want to be able to bring you up the date of the speed, you know, this is the thing, and this gets back into, if it's bringing somebody up to speed and reading them in, is that a meeting, or is that just research, is that just whichever, that's kind of my question. Is that a meeting, or is that just research, is that just whichever, that's kind of my question. You know, it's important that all decisions and decision making is done at a posted meeting. But to share, here's the file, by the way, I want you to read it over, is that a thing? That's my question. I'd like the chance to set up a meeting for the board with Gary and Tom, and I'm pretty sure even though Tom has retired, he still keeps his hand in. And read you guys in on what's happened over the past three or four years. You know, why this happened, where we were going with it, what this step was, and what this means from an engineering standpoint. We all can have what we think, but these are the guys with the letters, if you will. You know, I can tell you what the right prescription is, but you're going to look at me and go, John, let me tell you, you don't want to take that.
Or you say, go ahead, take it.
Take a double dose.
So I think an opportunity for, so to speak, the, the historical to be read in is, is an opportunity.
Yeah. But we need to meet with the people who are concerned and with the.
Yeah, but you've got to go in with some facts too, first of all, if you wanted to hear there, and then we'll get back to you, that's just going to push it back.
So does it make sense to have a workshop meeting where we, where we have John explain to us, the two guys from wherever they are, explain to us? Have that meeting, get our grip on it, and then us, and then say, okay, we can meet tomorrow night, or no, we can't meet for, we can't meet for a week, for two weeks, depending on how much.
Not a decision meeting, that's just a.
We, the, the school committee used to have workshop meetings, on a, on a top, you know, not, not to deliberate.
It has to be able to the public, though.
It has to be, it has to be able to the public, the public very rarely came, nobody ever, at least to our meetings.
Okay, so how fast will we get that done?
We, we had a meeting today.
One of the neighbors?
No, no, I had called, if you recall, last week, I mentioned that I had called Kai and Bond. Only to learn that the person that we've been working with is on the Cape, and tapered off in the work that he does. And so we have another person, that they said, we'll send someone else to come in and take a look, and he came in today. I brought him down here because Pam knows more about this than I do. And he went through some of the reports, took some information with him, and they're going to have a look at it. And get back to us, I guess. So what their, their thoughts are, he got an explanation as to how the two wells came about, and how the problems developed, and when they developed. So they're going to be, I guess, spending some time with that, and then they'll come back with their analysis.
Yeah, I mean, I've got to provide him, obviously, a ton of information, historical information, I mean, but Tom must have a file, the size of ours, in the air office as well. But he went over to visit Mark to talk about the reverse osmosis, and whether or not something could be installed at the garage, et cetera. But anyway, so he's just jumping in now as to what he's going to need from us, I don't know for additional information.
And he probably can reach out to Tom as well, and get information from him.
Does, does it make sense to communicate with that gentleman and give him a deadline for his, for that report? Okay, which we'd like it within ten days or two weeks? And then have a list of questions that we have, if you, you have specific questions or relative to, you know, like, I, I would be interested in how long our liability lasts on this thing.
The word liability, we have, as you know, a vendor who is interested in selling a service, if you will. And this is the vendor I use, we all use Joe, you know, good guy, quality guy, but his job is to sell that service. And so he might say, well, the town's at fault, and I'm happy to provide you remediation. Because that's his job. So a caution against that, like I say, look at a lot of the history of it. There's stuff that Tom knows, that Gary knows, Dana even knows, that really, all these things have to be brought back in to really get a good timeline, a good historical perspective of it. I like Mary Ellen's idea of a workshop to really, let's pull all the data together, review it, and really see if we can really get a handle on the whole thing.
And give him a timeline for his report.
Well, I don't know this new guy here.
This is not a ten day turnaround, this is years of reports that he's going to have to get up to speed on. And the fortunate thing is that most of our concerns are on this side of the road and not across the street. It emphasized to him that that water is on.
Yeah.
So, but I plan on spending time tomorrow to. The gentleman that sent you the email, is he, he's on a, he's on a.
Well, he wants to get, he wants to find out as soon as possible, because he wants to sell his property.
Right.
And is he on this side or that side?
He's on this side.
He's old Francis Stockton Jones.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay. Well.
And we have the lady too.
Oh, her concern to me, yeah. So I mean, there's, I mean, there, well, those are two separate things. Yeah, there's the current well, and she's provided, there's a guy who's not on that well, but he said, I think my well water has been affected by this.
Right.
That's his opinion. And the question, is there validity to that, or is it just a fact?
Like you said, find out.
Sometimes you're in a part of town, you mentioned, what was your expression? You've got water shooting in the air, and your neighbor a hundred feet away is getting a trickle. You don't know what the ground provides.
Well, could we have the, the workshop and invite him to come to the workshop and just explain to us in general? What are, what are the, what are the options, what, what, where do we stand here? I mean, not get into, you know, the report, having looked at ten years of it, or whatever it is.
Well, Pam, about the background, like I say, if he's just being read in by his own office, it may take him three or four days just to go through the file. And so, come back to us and see what's realistic for him to get back to us, Don, maybe end of next week or something like that.
Yeah.
All right.
Listen, I did attend the planning board meeting, I think you're aware of what went on there. The Ed will continue to serve until somebody, so his resignation is based on hold until they find a suitable candidate to present to our board. So as not to leave them short of person. I think they did, they have been working on the bylaw suggestions for town meeting, and they're going to be ready for that.
There, how many, how many members are they on now?
It's five members.
And so if they were, if they were, it was short one, it would be.
There are certain requirements for a special permit, you have the minimum of four, what's called a super majority. And so if one resigns, and all of a sudden one's out, they can't act. And therefore, because sometimes it passes, if you don't act, you could harm the town. You might have an opportunity, you wouldn't want it to pass, but because you couldn't form your super majority, it passed by default, and that might not be what the town wants.
Okay, and what, um, um, what was I going to say? What, oh, are they, what are they doing to get somebody? Are they doing anything? Are they, are they asking?
Both, both.
All the ones who did.
Anything else?
Uh, there's no COA meeting this month, or housing board has already passed, so next month I'll be attending those, well, the other ones.
Um, the schools are going along. We haven't got much, much of an update, the, um, they've changed their meetings to Thursdays, which I think I told you last week, or last, whenever we met before, five thirty at night.
Why, five thirty?
Um, because one of them had a workshop, a work, a change in work hours, so they wanted to get her, be able to, for sure everybody could attend. Um, um, what? I don't know, that's about it, that's all I had to say, I didn't even think about it.
All right. All right. Town administrator report?
Okay, you have an updated warrant, says August thirty first. I removed one article, and I updated article four, which is the emergency, emergency medical technician operational base bylaw. The update came from the planning department. I did remove. One of the articles having to do with a transfer from stabilization. After doing that, I was wondering, is there any chance that the town is going to take some money for, additional money for trees? And would they take it from, would they take it from stabilization?
No.
No.
No. Uh, let me just make a point about that, we know what the number is for free cash, and.
So they're just taking out free cash?
I mean, yeah, basically, I mean, you spend over four hundred and fifty on the trees, many trees left.
And I did add article ten, which is a short term.
Yeah, the one thing, if you wouldn't mind, Bob, typically, the last thing you do are the two, these articles. And if you leave ten at the end, we'll have to take it out of order. Because you want to do all your transfers on appropriate, from five, before you do your final work for them, so pump it up, yeah.
Right, before you reduce the tax rate, then you don't know.
Then you went and left, so what if it got turned down, you know, so you got this unused money.
Uh, I, I guess my question would be, when do you want to execute this warrant?
Well, the other thing is, I thought on your list here, you mentioned the Borrego pilot, I don't see an article for it. Basically, the article would just be authority for the town to negotiate. There's no expiration to it. We have the same, we have the same, uh, for Mill Road, or.
Yeah, just the same, just the same wording, and just Borrego in there.
So it's just authorization.
Yeah, like I say, you can copy, I think there's almost been one every town meeting, pretty much.
I had a question someone asked me, and I, I didn't know, so I referred them to Dana, but for the trees, do they put those out to bid, that anybody can bid for them?
Yeah, they do, well, there's two companies that they use.
Anybody, any other person uses it?
The only two companies that are really available for this kind of work in the region that have the apparatus, you know, to go high and to take down large trees, are used, both companies are used.
And if somebody was interested in bidding, how would they find out when, they might be using smaller vehicles or whatever?
Typically on the state list, I mean, they got to be Alpine, and the ocean requirements over the past couple of years, a lot of companies just went out and said, we're not.
They have to be ocean. I gave, I gave him his, his name, and said, you know, Colin, and, because I don't know anything about this at all.
But most of these trees require Alpine equipment.
There's no, there's no intention to be exclusive, in fact, I've been talking to Dana about this, if he'd like to have more activity rather than less.
And they just take the low bid, is that what they do? Or, or the best bid, that can do the job, the, the way they tell you about?
He took the hundred thousand dollars last year, and basically did two contracts with the only two companies, both on the state list. So you don't have to bid if you're on the state list, in other words, it's already been bid.
Oh, okay.
So you're qualified.
Got it, thank you.
So that's that, I've been through most of the rest of the stuff that's on my report. Amoresco, I think, is making progress. We received the endangered species report that I had sent off for the previous week. Uh, the next step for them is the appearance before the conservation commission. There is an endangered species there.
The turtle, right?
Yeah.
One.
So, you know, I think they can, they, they can work through that, so. So.
Ted, are they making an appointment to meet with you guys that you know of?
I, I don't know, they are supposed to be meeting with us, but I have not seen what our new schedule's going to be, John.
Okay.
Yeah, that's their intent.
Yeah.
Next step for them. Also, we are going to appoint a conservation agent, I'm going to appoint a conservation agent, have made an arrangement, and we will have several vacancies on the conservation commission. That the, the board will need to address in the next couple of meetings. The municipal vulnerability project is moving forward, we have a conference next week to basically review, not only Hampden, but the other, a couple of other towns that are part of this program. Are going to be reviewing it with the state agency, and move forward on that. I know about ambulance oversight committee, we have finally finished, I thought we had finally finished all the work with Entree, only to discover, we have one more machine in this building that's running Windows seven. And after all the discussion, it was a big surprise, I would say. Uh, also, I mentioned the Zoom conference that we had, selectmen might be interested in the Clear Gov Conference, I'm going to send invitations. I didn't send an invitation to you and to those who are on the advisory committee for this meeting on September the second, at eleven thirty AM over Zoom. It's basically an introduction to the town of this system that is grant funded for us.
Can you send out the invites? I know I didn't get an invite, maybe just, do it as an invite thing instead of a, something other, it didn't show up in the calendar.
Okay. September second at eleven thirty, so I'll, I'll make sure that everyone gets.
Particularly when you do the invite thing, about like the population for the calendar.
Well, it'll be of interest, so I'll make sure that you have it. And that's the report.
Any further coming for the board? Or adjourn? All in favor? All right.